Harding. Hug. Johnson. Melton. Mr. President.
My pledge, ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please have a seat. I'll forewarn you that today's comments might be a little personal, and I hope I can keep my emotions about me when I do this, so bear with me. In past opportunities for opening comments, I talked about this board in terms of being a family, that we need to work together, put aside our differences, and be able to move on to the next item with a clear slate. But our family also has an extended family, and those that frequently appear us on a regular basis. Today, we share the loss, the anguish, of one of our extended family members. I don't need to identify who it is, but I want him and his family to know that we grieve for you, we think about you, and the pain for the loss of your loved one. Please know we have you in our thoughts, our prayers, and have our deepest sympathies. We love you, and we hope the good memories flood your heart to fill the void.
An affidavit publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting, and a current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of legislative chambers.
Good afternoon, welcome to the Omaha City Council. We appreciate having you here today. We look forward to hearing your testimony on our many items. I would encourage you to turn your cellphones off, or at least to vibrate. If you have any difficulty hearing the proceedings today, we do have a building commission attendant down here in the front that has listening devices, or you can also access the screen in the back that has closed captioning.
Item six, to consider a Class C liquor license for burrito, MV, and tequila bar located at 6113 Maple Street.
The public hearing and vote on number six is today. I think we have the applicant by Zoom, Mr. Miller. We'll get you off mute here in a second. All right, try that.
There you go. Hi Pete, how are you?
Good. Name and address for the record and...
6113 Maple Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68104.
Thank you. Just here to answer questions, right?
Yep.
All right, thank you. Any other proponents on number six? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Miller, I just want to thank you for your investment in Benson. I know you own several businesses there, and this is a new one for you. I look forward to working with you in this respect, and also your local management.
Great, thank you so much.
You bet. Motion in a second to approve. Mr. Harding, go ahead.
I just wanted to ask a quick question of finance. I think we had a note that maybe there was some question as to whether or not that they were current on their restaurant tax?
It's resolved.
Steve Curtis, City Finance, they are current.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. No other lights, there's a motion in a second to approve. Roll call.
Roe, Bagley, Harding, Hug, Johnson, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item seven, to consider a Class C liquor license for Firewater Grill located at 7007 Grover Street. And the applicant has requested a postponement of this item to 325.
So a motion to postpone? Motion in a second to postpone for one week? Roll call.
Roe, Bagley, Harding, Hug, Johnson, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item eight, to consider a Class C E liquor license for Godega Market located at 1917 South 67th Street, Suite 120.
Public hearing and vote on number eight is today. We also have the applicant by Zoom, Mr. Flick.
Yes, I'm here. My name is Nate Flick. I'm here on behalf of Godega Market located at 1917 South 67th Street, Suite 120, 68106, and I'm here to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Bagley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. Mr. Flick, good afternoon. Is this in the inner rail or right next to it?
It is in front of it in that HDR building.
Okay, so it's in the base of the HDR?
Correct.
Okay, okay, thanks. I wish you the best of luck there in Exarban. Great location. I'll make a motion to support this today. Thanks.
Thank you.
There's a motion in a second to approve. No other lights? Roll call.
Roe, Bagley, Harding, Hug, Johnson, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Thank you, good luck.
Thank you. Item nine, to consider a Class D liquor license for Shankar Food Mart located at 822 North 40th Street.
The public hearing and vote on number nine is today. Proponents, please.
Hi, I'm Perry Purge. I don't see my client here, but I know that he feels the ability not to do alcohol sales at this time puts his convenience store at a competitive disadvantage. So the focus would not be on alcohol sales. He would just like to be able to add an additional product line to the store.
Okay, and your address?
24804 Country Club Road, Ashland, Nebraska.
Okay, might have some questions here for you in a second. Any other proponents that want to speak today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. So if you wouldn't mind stepping up, are you suggesting that you no longer want to apply for a liquor license?
No, I apologize. I'm the attorney representing the applicant, and I was surprised he was not here today. But I'm happy to be here and speak, which is, of course, what he pays me to do. But I do believe he would like to have the liquor license to move forward. He has a track record of success running the convenience store. Like I said, his focus would not be on alcohol. He just simply wishes to augment his existing product lines.
And has he visited with the neighbors nearby?
I cannot speak to that. He's been there for many years, though, I believe, and he knows all of his neighbors. We have not received any complaints or concerns that I'm aware.
And you were expecting him to be here today?
Yes, ma'am.
But he's had some folks walk in. Is it possible he's in the room? No? Okay.
This is in my district and...
Is your district?
Oh, okay. I've been corrected. Councilmember Bagley indicates that this is in his district. I'll yield to him. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bagley.
Thanks, Councilmember Johnson. This, I did speak to your client this morning. Mr. Purge, good afternoon, by the way.
Thank you.
And Ms. Maggensen from Jocelyn Neighborhood Association did speak to your client last week. Can you confirm what... I don't want to speak for your client. I know what he told me on the phone this morning. Are there concessions that he is willing to make with the application of this liquor license?
Yes, if you're referring to, for example, I think shooters or single-serving shots that are sometimes popular by the cash registers of convenience stores and that nature, I don't think that's of any significant concern to him to have that exclusion, for example.
How about, would he be willing to put restrictions on the selling of single-canned beers of 32 ounces or less?
I haven't discussed that issue with him specifically, but I would be surprised if it was great concern to him. Again, he doesn't intend to be the neighborhood liquor store. He just doesn't want to lose competition to nearby gas stations, et cetera, for people who want to stop and buy convenience products that are in a 12-pack or something like that for consumption at home.
Okay, and again, I didn't want to speak for your client. He had indicated maybe something happened and he's not here. But I wanted to get at least on the record that he was okay with... And it's in the opposition letter from Jocelyn. I don't know if he had a chance to see that.
I apologize, I had not seen that.
Okay, so in the letter, the request from the Jocelyn Castle Neighborhood Association... By the way, when they opened a couple of years ago, they were very welcoming to your client. I think your client would agree with that. It's a great community there, and they came down and testified welcoming with open arms a new establishment there. So when she talked to your client, in the letter they submitted to the council in opposition that they were willing to work with them on, it was to put restrictions on, so the small airplane shooters and single beer cans of 32 ounces or smaller. That is what they were asking. Now, do you want to speak for your client if he is willing to agree to that?
I'd like to confirm it with him, but I think we would stipulate to that. Where if the council wanted to move forward with those restrictions, we wouldn't oppose it.
Okay, I want to ask the clerk a question, if you give me one second, okay? Thanks for your patience. I, in talking to our staff, I think it's best that we postpone this until next week so your client can be here. And I know Ms. Melton and I have talked to keep me on task to make sure we're fair to your client, but also what the restrictions we want to be. So I'm going to make a motion to lay this over for a week. And if your client could be here, and maybe the three of us can talk before that, I'd be glad to do that with the Neighborhood Association, so there's no miscommunications for anybody. Does that sound okay?
Yeah, it sounds very reasonable.
Okay.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you.
Thank you. There's a motion in a second to lay over one week? Roll call.
Roe, Bagley, Harding, Hug, oh, Hug is out there, Johnson, Melton.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero. Item 10, to consider a Class D liquor license for Mega Saver located at 6508 John J. Pershing Drive.
Public hearing and vote on number 10 is today. Proponents, please.
Hi, my name is Tamar Samiev, here with Mega Saver. My address is 202 South 73rd Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68114. Just here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Ms. Johnson.
Thank you. Hi, how are you today?
Hey, pretty good, how are you?
Good. I'm going to ask you the same question that I asked of the attorney previously, which is your level of engagement with that community? Or should I say, the client's engagement?
With that community, I don't think we've heard anything negative from the community. I know that we have a lot of neighbors right around the store who visit the store multiple times a day. I haven't heard any opposition from them.
And have you had any engagement with the neighborhood associations in that area?
I am not sure if anyone from my company has. I don't believe I have.
Okay, that's something that's very important because it's neighborly and it's a business accolade that should occur with neighbors and business owners in the area, especially if you are wanting to have a good relationship. And they should have some familiarity of you. That way, if something should begin to happen, trash, altercations, those kinds of things, they'll have a face in mind to, or a phone number to call to have that conversation. So you want, I would think that as a business owner, you would want to be proactive in that. And starting your relationship off in the beginning with that neighborhood is very important.
Absolutely.
What's your thoughts on that?
Yeah, I would definitely agree, and that's something we'll try to do. We just recently took over from the previous owners, so...
Right, but you're here before us, asking for a liquor license, and you're saying that you agree that that's something that should be done, but yet you didn't do it. So...
I'm not 100% sure that we haven't done it. I mean, someone else from my company might have. I don't want to say for sure if we have or haven't, but it's definitely something I agree that is important, and I'll look into right away.
Well, I would like to entertain the motion of laying this over so that we can have that engagement.
Is that for one week?
Yes.
Okay, there's a motion to lay over for one week. Is there a second?
Second.
No further lights? Roll call.
Roe, Bagley, Harding, Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero.
Thanks.
Item 11, to consider a Class D liquor license for Y Family Convenience Store located at 7102 North 30th Street. A is communications in opposition, B is communication from the applicant's attorney.
This item was postponed from the last council meeting. The public hearing was already held and closed. Councilmembers, if you want to entertain a light or discussion, you may turn your light on to engage any testifiers. Is there any questions you may have?
Well, good afternoon.
No, it's not a public hearing. Is there a light from a council member? Okay, Ms. Melton, you're recognized.
Hi, it's my understanding that there may have been some agreements reached between your clients. And in a second, I'll ask you to state your name and your address. And if you could, I'd like to hear what those agreements are, and then maybe we'll call up. I see there's a member of the Neighborhood Association to see if she would like to speak. Okay.
Yes, Council Miss Melton.
State your name and address.
This is Pang Lee. Address is 8424 West Center Road, Suite 108, Omaha, Nebraska. I represent the Y Family applying for a liquor license at a Y Family Convenience Store. My client has talked with the Neighborhood Association multiple times, and met with them this past week, and we have come to agreement on certain concerns that from the neighborhood that involves parking and the size of the liquor that are going to be sold, and the percentage of the inventories that will be sold at the store as well. And if you want me to go into the specific, I can specifically talk about the layout, as you mentioned during our last week's session, and also the specifics capacity for the beer and liquor to be sold at that store as well.
Yeah, that would be great. So that, I think we want to make sure that what the agreements are with the Neighborhood Association here and all the council members, we want to probably see what that is. Did you have a photo? Because you can lift the arm of that Elmo, it just lifts right straight up if you have...
So this is a layout of the store.
Lift that arm up, that black arm. There you go. All the way up.
Does that suffice?
Yep, there we go.
Okay, so that's the layout inside the store, as you mentioned last week. And one of the concerns the neighborhood had was the parking. City council asked some questions about the parking as well. So my understanding is that the premise we have has six parking lots, and we also have an agreement with the neighboring business. They also have eight to nine parking spots available for us to use as well. And there has been a written agreement signed between the Y Family business and also the neighboring stores. And the Neighborhood Association received a written copy of that agreement for the parking. And for the liquor that is going to be sold will involve 24 ounces or more for beer, 200 millimeter or more for liquor. Those are the minimum capacity that will be sold for liquor. And another item was the 35% and 65% of the inventory, as we discussed. This is primarily a convenience store. 65% of the item will involve the fresh fruit, vegetables, and house good merchandise, and 35% will involve alcohol.
Okay, and is your client here?
Yes.
Okay, would your client be willing to come up and just confirm that they agree to the limitation on the sizes for the liquor that they're selling? The parking conditions can't be made part of the liquor license. And really, the percentage is something that you're stating on the record. But we can put the size of the bottles or cans that are being sold, that can go as a formal condition. So, but I would like to have your clients specifically agree to the language. Do either of the council members or the clerk have the specific language?
I have the specific language. It's no single containers of beer less than 24 ounces and no single containers of liquor less than 200 milliliters.
Thank you. Could your client come up?
Certainly.
And confirm?
Good afternoon.
Just your name and address for the record, too, please.
My name is Yordeet. Address is 7102 North 30th Street.
Thank you.
Thank you. And at this point, did you hear what the clerk just said? And that would be a condition of your liquor license. Do you agree to those conditions?
Yep, that we can sell 24 ounces and bigger for beer and 200 or bigger for alcohol.
Okay, and then I understand that you have kind of an agreement with the neighborhood that you won't have more than 35% of your inventory of liquor, but that's not, it's hard to, it's hard to measure that for purposes of the liquor license, but hopefully you will keep to your word with that with your neighbors, because otherwise you wouldn't be a good neighbor. Do you agree to that?
Agree.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And if you want to have a seat, I'm just going to allow anyone from the Neighborhood Association, the point person, if you'd like to come up.
Good afternoon, Council. My name is Nancy Garter, 2720 Iowa Street. I am the president of the Miller Park Mini Lusa Neighborhood Association. Just briefly, I want to thank you for your questioning last week. It helped us get to a better point. It's very instrumental. I want to thank Councilwoman Johnson for her support in allowing the measure to be laid over, and then her guidance and feedback. We worked with the family, and we're looking forward to having them there. They've also agreed to take care of something that we value greatly, which is keeping the property clean. We have a problem with litter in our neighborhood. And we're confident they'll be able to do well. The extended family does have experience at another location at the B&amp;T at 20th and Florence. And so we know they bring, from an extended family point of view, wealth of experience. And we appreciate the family working with us.
All right, and I just want to confirm one, that the agreements that you just made were the... Is that your understanding what the agreements are?
Yes, that is. We are, yeah, 24 ounces and larger beer, 200 milliter and larger liquor.
Okay, thank you, and I'm glad they were able to provide you with that agreement on the parking. And then also show us a complete diagram of kind of how the store is going to be set up. That looks like a much better setup than kind of what we heard.
Right, and we submitted, and I'm sure they will, to their agreement on the parking with the neighboring motorcycle club.
Okay, that's great, thank you. Thank you very much. And I have nothing further. I'll yield the floor.
Thank you. Mr. Bagley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. Ms. Gardner, you don't have to get back up, but just, I appreciate you taking the time to reach out to me because a lot of these are easy, but this one was kind of complex. And I know a lot of us had questions, and you're working, so you're baptized by fire. You said that there's a lot of things you learned in the last week. Well, there's a lot of things I've learned in three and a half years on the city council that I smile at you as you're laughing. Those are the things that, this was a little bit complex, but thanks for your working and at least taking the time to reach out and let me know what your position was before you got here today, because that alleviates a lot of the questions I may have had, knowing where you guys were at. So good luck in your new leadership. I know they're lucky to have you. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Gardner, and the why in terms of your ability to work things out and come to an agreeable situation so that everybody is happy. And I motion to approve. Motion to approve with the conditions.
Motion to amend and read the restrictions into the record.
Yep, so the motion would be to amend to add the restrictions of no single containers of beer less than 24 ounces and no single containers of liquor less than 200 milliliters.
Okay, I'll second that. No further lights? Roll call.
Roe, Bagley, Harding, Hug, Johnson, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes, and then as amended?
A motion to...
Yes, you can add that into this one, too.
You can motion to amend as amended, but then also remember to waive rule seven as well.
Okay, motion to amend as amended and rule seven.
Second. Don't see any additional lights. Roll call.
Roe, Bagley, Harding, Hug, Johnson, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Thank you all for your testimony.
Item 12, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for Antler View West located southwest of 192nd Street and West Maple Road. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number 12 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve. Roll call.
Roe, Bagley, Harding, Hug, Johnson, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 13, an ordinance to rezone property located at 1416 Williams Street from GI District to R7 District. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number 13 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve. Roll call.
Roe, Bagley, Harding, Hug, Johnson, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 14, an ordinance to rezone property located at 2214 Florence Boulevard from R4 District to R6 District. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number 14 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Motion in a second to approve. Roll call.
Roe, Bagley, Harding, Hug, Johnson, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 15, an ordinance to rezone property located south of 17th Street and Willis Avenue from R4 District to R5 District. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number 15 is today. Proponents, please. Yep, please come down. Name and address for the record.
Betty Deep, address 1805 Lothrip Street, Omaha, 68110.
Okay, thank you. Just here to answer any questions?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. There's a motion in a second to approve. Roll call.
Roe, Bagley, Harding, Hug, Johnson, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Thanks for being here.
Item 16, an ordinance to amend the boundaries of the ACI 4 overlay district to incorporate into that district the property located at 600 North 93rd Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number 16 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. On second, roll call.
Roe, Bagley, Harding, Hug, Johnson, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 17 and 18 can be considered together for property located at 3311 and 3313 California Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item 17, an ordinance to rezone this property from R3 District to TOD 3 MNR District. Item 18, an ordinance to rescind the PK overlay district.
Public hearing and vote on items 17 and 18 are today. Proponents, please.
My name is Ketao Paradid. My address is... 3311 California Street.
Okay.
Omaha, Nebraska.
Thank you. Do you want to identify yourself, too?
Don Curry, 3324 North 16th Street. I'm here as the general contractor for the project.
Okay, both just here to answer any questions?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Any other proponents that want to speak today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Bagley, you're recognized.
Thanks. Good afternoon, gentlemen. Tell me about the conversation you had with the Gifford Park Neighborhood Association.
We spoke with the gentleman, it was actually at the planning board meeting. I wasn't directly in contact with the association itself, but he said he was a member of the planning association. He owns a bike shop right off of, is that 33rd Street, if I'm not mistaken?
Yes, 33rd Street.
And that conversation led to us going from, I want to say, 87% impermeable with the concrete, to actually reducing that to 80%.
Did you have any other conversation with anybody else in Gifford Park?
No, that was it.
Okay, and I know this is the first chance we've had a chance to talk about this. What's your intentions at these two locations here?
Yeah, I'll show you pictures. So, we're looking to do two duplexes. So, we're looking at two-story units, two-story walk-ups. Each unit would consist of two bedrooms, two baths, so total of four units with parking in the rear of the step, of the rear of the property, rather, and we're looking at actually putting these up at a market rate.
Okay, and when are you planning on, if everything goes as you want, when do you want to start putting shovels in the ground and get going?
Well, let's just say, again, perfect scenario, we're able to submit the permit. Let's just say, let's take a discussion April 1, and it was that 45-day turnaround time in reference to the permit being issued, so we're looking at May, June, probably say July, August.
Okay, I'll make a motion to support these, but I do want to get together with you guys, and also, it is important, as you've learned in past dealings with the council, to engage the neighborhood association, not just the business across the street, but actually the leadership.
Yes.
Of the, I grew up a block from there in Gifford Park. Great community, as you guys probably have done your research, but it is important to include the neighborhood associations in letting them know everything that you're planning on doing in the communication you'll have, because it is, it's a wonderful community, but that's something I want to reiterate to you gentlemen, that let's make sure that happens, and please reach out to me, and I'll set that up, and we'll have a good conversation on that.
Okay, that sounds like a plan.
Okay.
I'm sending you an email this evening, and we kind of go from there.
That'd be great.
Getting that done.
Thank you, thanks. I'll make a motion on these two items for approval. Thanks.
Motion a second to approve. Roll call.
Row, Bagley, Harding, Hug, Johnson, Melton.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Item 19, a resolution to approve the Popleton Project East Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Project Plan located at 2911 Popleton Avenue in an amount up to $810,899.
Public hearing and vote on number 19 is today. Proponents, please.
Yeah, good afternoon, Don Seaton, Omaha City Planning. This is an affordable housing project located on a vacant lot at 29th and Popleton. I hear, the proposal is for a new four- and five-story apartment building with 51 units. These will be affordable for very low-income households. The funding is complex. It includes low-income housing tax credits, ARPA funds, and city home funds. The property is located in an extremely blighted area, so have a 20-year TIF term. Developers in common housing, managed by Christian Gray. Get a little closer on the rendering here. This project is a $19 million investment in the neighborhood. TIF support is $810,899. We ask for your support.
Thank you. Other proponents?
Hi, Cheryl Garst from In Common Housing Development Corporation and 1340 Park Avenue. Thank you, Don. Yeah, I also just had some renderings in case you were, we appreciate the city's support on this. Again, inside joke between Don and I that it's a complex capital stack, and a critical piece is the TIF component for the operations and long-term sustainability of these affordable, yet workforce, housing units for the neighborhood and the city at large.
Yeah, thank you. Any other proponents that want to speak today?
Good afternoon, Omaha City Council, Don A. Johnson, the Johnson Question Foundation, and North Omaha Concerned Citizen Foundation. I'm supporting this community going back to 1975. The business on that corner that she's speaking of was one of my sponsors, her and that group, and Senator Dave Carm to send me to Egypt to do more research. So, I hope, I'm glad to see it's going into that community. So, I was trying to tell you, folks, how old I really am.
Any other proponents on this item? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Bagley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. Ms. Garst, couple of questions for you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
This is the nicest, finally see this come to us. I know a lot of work's been put in from In Common. I can't remember how far back ago it was I met with Mr. Gray and looking at that site and the location of it, so now we're finally here today. Can you just briefly talk about, Don had mentioned, the funding source of light tech, ARPA, and home funds? Just give us a brief synopsis, how that works, because these are 51 affordable units that are desperately needed. This council talks all the time about that, and it's a hard process getting there, but before us here today, if you could talk about just how that works briefly?
Sure, yes, thank you for the opportunity, Councilman. Well, I have a, I could personally and professionally speak. I have a 25-year career in development, and it's almost a tale of two cities. Projects pre-COVID and post-COVID are astronomically different, and we are at a very critical point where we need multiple sources of funds to get these over the finish line, and the margins are beyond tight. So, look forward to the next 20 years to deliver more projects like Popleton, but, you know, on the Popleton, it's leveraging about a $3 million permanent loan on a $19 million project. That tells you something. And we had a public hearing last night at the Park Avenue Commons for phase two of this development, the next apartment building with the townhomes, possible childcare, and when they looked at the rents, you know, some residents would say, I wish it was still cheaper. These are 30% below market in order for persons to only spend 30% of their household income, so they have more disposable income to save for down payment on homeownership, if that's they so choose, or other life goals. But still, yeah, we couldn't have done this without, first, the Finance Authority with their low-income housing tax credits. That's generating about $12 million. The state of Nebraska Affordable Housing Tax Credits, paired with that, state home funds, city home funds, thank you again, City of Omaha for those, and wonderful staff getting us through the finish line on a difficult infill site, you know, plus private philanthropy on top of that with another million dollars, seeing again the need, you know, for this capital stack. ARPA funds in 2022, again, a very critical piece. We don't know what we would have done without the ARPA funds, and we're getting on the next project or after, I guess, this site, we're going to have to figure out how to make up about $1,002 on the next project. And tariffs coming down, you know, this this next cycle, right during construction, we couldn't execute our construction agreement and lock in prices until the environmental was done on the state home funds. So, it's just going to get more challenging, and again, our goal at In Common is really to be well below the market rents, not to maximize those HUD levels from what we're hearing from neighborhood associations and our clientele. The TIF is absolutely critical. We couldn't have done it without you because of those operations and to leverage that permanent debt, even though as small as it may be.
I appreciate that explanation, and again, the work and the time, not only with their city planning department, who does a great job of cutting through as much as they can, but also helping you guys get to where we're at today. But I give my best in common, and I'm glad to make a motion and support this today, and I'll look forward to the progress and better things coming in the future. I know there's a lot of, as you mentioned, clearly, some bumps in the road coming up, the unknowns, but at least this one is going to go forward, and I wish you the best of luck. Thanks for coming down today.
Thank you.
Just motion a second. I may have a follow-up question for you, too. I think it is a great example of the complexity of developing affordable housing really anywhere, but specifically in our city as well, and so I commend you for that, and I'm definitely supportive here today. And to the point of, the point you made, I think you made it well about ARPA being a key component of this capital stack, about $1 million here, that without that federal funding, this isn't happening, even with tax, even with tax increment financing. But ARPA is going away. There is no more ARPA. So, one of the things we've started talking about, and I think we need to take a real serious look at, is community housing bonds. A city can do that at a low interest rate to help fulfill a gap like that in a project like this, otherwise does not happen. So, I just wanted to mention that as something we're looking into, and I think needs to happen to help facilitate this next round of affordable housing products we hope to see.
We would love and welcome any creativity and love to be part of that conversation. Thank you for that.
Yeah, and then in your first phase there, I think you described it as 40%, 60%, 8% average median income for rentals?
That's correct.
Do you know off the top of your head about what that is for this particular market?
Sure, of course, this is from last year's numbers. You know, that was a person making $28,000 a year, even up to a four-person household of $80,000 a year. So, the term low income, too, I mean, the federal government has not had a branding, remarketing of their program names. I really refer to it as workforce housing. These are service industry employees, retail employees that are working individuals, some seniors that are on their social security at times, but, yeah, really, that missing middle of workforce housing income is what you see here. So, a step above, you know, public housing. The next phase will be more mixed income, you know, with an average of 60% area median income of $46,000, but with a sprinkle of some market rate units, because we also see, again, in my professional experience, we call them the 81 percenters. You know, most HUD programs are at 80% AMI, and there's been times where a young couple, two children, applied for the program, they made $500 too much annually, $500 to miss that program. So, we hope, again, the strategic vision of a mixed-income community catches those 81 percenters as well.
Great, I appreciate that, and I also appreciate the thought about childcare, too.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any further lights. There's a motion and a second to approve. Roll call.
Row, Bagley, Harding, Hug, Johnson, Melton.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good luck.
Consent agenda. Any member of the city council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the city council rules supporter.
The public hearings on agenda items 20 through 32 were held on March 11. I don't see any further lights. Is there a motion?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve. Roll call.
Row, Bagley, Harding, Hug, Johnson, Melton.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero.
Excuse me, sir.
The public hearings on agenda items 33 through 48 are today. You cannot disrupt the meeting, Larry. You cannot disrupt the meeting.
You may sit down, you may, you may sit down or be removed.
Next, we have the public hearings on agenda items 33 through 48. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by name and address and who you represent, or if you're a proponent or an opponent. These are items 33 through 48.
Take a vote on it.
I don't see any proponents or opponents for 33 to 48. Okay, please come down. Sorry for that disruption.
I'm a little confused.
I'm here for 34 through 38. On behalf of Aldi, I'm a proponent for all of them.
Thank you. We appreciate you being here.
Yeah, my name's Ava Tracy, and then I'm here for all five locations, just here for questions as a proponent.
Okay, thank you. Any other testifiers on these items? Seeing none, public hearings are closed.
There's a motion and a second to approve.
Roll call.
Row, Bagley, Harding, Hug, Johnson, Melton.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero.
Thank you.
One public hearing can be held for items 49 through 54. Ordnance is approving green infrastructure annual maintenance service price agreements for Adams Park, Albright Park, Hitchcock Park, Rock Brook Creek, Sarpy Ave, and Fontanel Park.
The public hearing on items 49 through 54 are today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Stube or Mr. Tyler, we didn't address this this morning, but since I see you here, could you just describe briefly what these do? These are a little bit different than what we normally see.
Yeah, these are essentially service agreements that we have for all of the green infrastructure projects that were incorporated into parks with the cooperation of the Parks Department. So, it's essentially, it's a agreement for those green infrastructure projects.
Things like water runoff and storm sewer improvements and things of that nature?
Correct. Anything that we did with regard to the combined sewer overflow area, there's significant amounts of things that were done to allow us to comply with the permit that we have for a CSO program, and these are essentially improvements that were done in the park that need to be maintained, and these are service agreements related to that.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
I don't see any further lights. Next item?
Item 55, an ordinance to approve a major amendment to the Lakeside Plaza mixed-use district development agreement to allow spare time entertainment to occupy more than 10% of the existing center identification sign on Lot 5. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on number 55 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 56, an ordinance to approve the 3552 Apartments Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Agreement.
Public hearing on number 56 is today. Proponents, please.
Yeah, Don Seaton, Omaha City Planning, here for any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents?
Good afternoon, Omaha City Council, Don A. Johnson, Johnson Question Foundation, North Omaha Concerned Citizen Foundation, and 4928 North 52nd Street. And I still believe, Mr. Frederson, you are a wonderful gentleman, but I want to share with you all these apartments. Are we going to ever get any land for the medical marijuana, sir?
Any other opponents on this item? Seeing none, public hearings closed.
Non-action items, items 57 through 72, do not require public hearing or city council consideration at this meeting, but will be placed on a future agenda for public hearing and or vote. The reason for non-action is noted after the item on the agenda, as well as the date the item is expected to appear on agenda for consideration.
Mr. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second. Roll call.